Good evening again, Robert Taylor again. And I'm still a county resident and taxpayer. Nothing's changed. Before I get into what I really came to talk about, I want to compliment Mr. Posoda for his initiative in trying to get vodka off the shelves. As the council members know, but maybe the public doesn't, I've sent you all an email about that. And it's a little bit personal with me. Not that I have any relatives or friends in the Ukraine, but I did many years ago, when I was stationed on a destroyer, chase Russian submarines in the Mediterranean for a couple of weeks. It ruined what was supposed to be 10 days of liberty in Barcelona. We'd just gotten out of the Red Sea and Persian Gulf, and that was supposed to be your reward for doing that. But three Russian subs came out of the Black Sea, and we were all scrambled out, and we finally got one of them to surface, believe it or not. These were old whiskey-class submarines that could only stay down for a fairly limited period of time because of the oxygen situation. So I compliment that, and I think the council should send that letter and get that stuff off the shelves. I understand that the county or the liquor control people may take a slight hit on that because it's been bought, I guess, and has to be paid for, but think of what the people in the Ukraine are going through. Sorry about that. What I really came to talk about, but now I don't have to because there will be a public hearing, is the executive's salary situation. And I've sent you all emails on this, and I'll just summarize quickly in a word. I think that the proposal is way out of line in terms of the $124,000. Dr. Deriker mentioned a few minutes ago how you would increase the executive salary in proportion to the increase over that 16-year period of the per capita income in the county. Well, if you went back to 1994 and did the same calculation for the council, instead of raising the council's $5,000 to $21,000, my guess would be, I haven't done the math, but I think a pretty good guess on that would be the council salary would probably be somewhere in the range of $40,000 to $50,000. So you can do anything with these numbers. I would suggest that we look at other counties that are most like us, which would be Cecil County, where the county executive salary is $98,000. And if you do any kind of an analysis based on wealth, population, you will find that a $100,000 salary would be more than ample, would be very generous, to be sure. Frankly, I think it should be less than that, but 100 I could see as being a reasonable compromise. Turning to just a couple of other things on the agenda tonight is the further review of the Charter Review Commission and possible change of the charter. One of the items that's recommended in the executive branch of the portion of the charter is to do away with the requirement that within six months after every election of the county executive, he or she must appoint or reappoint all of the department heads. I think that would be a very foolish move. I think that those types of positions, I'm talking about department heads now, not assistant department heads or deputies or any county employees at a lower level, but those higher level employees should be subject to reappointment every election cycle. In the past, my understanding is there have been very few instances when setting department heads were not confirmed by the council after being reappointed by the executive. There have been some instances, I understand, but not many. And with that, I may not hang around for all of your discussion tonight because I do want to listen to the State of the Union. My wife's made the comment that it's probably going to be the start of March Madness this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other public comments? Yes.
So I just wanted to, hello, Monica Brooks again. I just wanted to just say everything that was presented from Wacomco Environmental Trust. We have testified on this before about the DAF tanks, but we are in full agreement what was stated on tonight. I just wanted to add that for the record again because we talked about it a few months ago. But yes, please, please, I hope you heard everything that Madeline said, everything, and please take it into serious consideration. Thank you.
You very much. Any other public comments? Seeing none. That concludes public comments. Council comments? No, we're good. Presidential comments, one clarification, just to make sure we're covering our bases. Mrs. Hurley wasn't sure whether or not we had done a motion in the second on Resolution 26, 2022 before Representatives from the Board of Education, the Department of Education came here. So I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution 26, 2022.
It's a move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so we're there. That being said, hang on one second, I would like to, we need to entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work session followed by a closed work session to consult with legal counsel to discuss pending litigation to protect attorney-client privilege pursuant to Section 3-305b, 8 of the general provisions, Article of the Anted Code of Maryland. That's a motion.
It's a move.
Yeah, a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, legislative session is adjourned. We're now in an open work session. First item on the agenda is with the Salisbury-Wacomco Planning and Zoning Commission and the fertilizer storage. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much for coming. Have a good night. Drive safe.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Paul.
Paul Wilber, County Attorney.
And Solo.
Lori was going to join me, but I'll run through this.
You wing it.
Okay.
Go ahead, here. Thanks.
Sure. So the planning commission has given a lot of consideration, both in public hearings, receiving written comments to this whole subject. It was the subject of several meetings at the planning commission, and it produced the recommendation, which I think is in your briefing book, and it also produced a recommended legislative response, you might say. And I'd like to just run through that with you. The definition is for a liquid organic fertilizer or soil amendment storage, and that would be the storage of a state of Maryland-approved fertilizer or soil amendment produced from poultry processing residuals via a dissolved air flotation process. Temporary portable and/or mobile storage is exempt and requires approval of the planning director or his or her designee. There's Lori.
Excuse me.
Back up. Good evening.
Good evening.
As far as where it can be located, it would be in the agricultural rural A1 zoning district, and it would only be allowed by special exception from the Wacomco County Board of Appeals. Liquid organic fertilizer or soil amendment storage would adhere to the following setbacks: 200 feet from all property lines, 400 feet from any residential dwelling not located on the same parcel or parcels under common ownership or lease, as well as any school, place of religious assembly, nursing home, daycare center, manufactured home park, subdivision of ten or more houses, or an approved health department septic system location to serve any of the above. And another aspect of this is the open storage tank erected prior to the enactment of this legislation pursuant to a permit by the county may continue as a nonconforming use in its current location regardless of zoning district. And all of this would be incorporated in the table of permitted uses. So that's a summary of the legislation. That's what's been presented from the planning commission, and it's now up to the council to decide how they'd like to proceed.
Okay. Questions from council? Josh, will you?
I guess I'll, I think the first thing I'll just bring up, I think we heard a couple of the public comments, folks asked how we're addressing some of the issues, the odor. I think the only thing they said was a 200-foot setback, what was proposed. And then the other thing they had mentioned was the risks to public health. What if a tank breaks, or mosquitoes, or flies breeding in there? I think that was some of the issues that we had gotten pictures from neighbors that had sent. And then the other thing that they mentioned was the traffic safety. These are at least three things that they didn't feel like we had addressed. The only thing I'd also add to it is, I guess, the other question in my mind is, you know, this is for an aerobic digestion, or pardon me, aerobic tank, aerobic process, right? I suppose anaerobic. The issue, another issue that was brought up in public comment was the Owens Branch, and I don't even know the Earth Care Project or anything about that, but from what I understand, it is an anaerobic project, which is essentially, instead of being an open process, this is a closed process. In a closed process, you can have material inside of this that will break down, and then you can capture that for gas or for, it helps contain the nutrients. Anaerobic digestion is kind of where everything is going. The old-school technology of sticking things in a giant tank and waiting for it to cross over, I'm honestly surprised that that even was proposed as something that is feasible. But most every current company or anyone that's involved in this, including, I mentioned, Purdue has a really good facility in Seaford, Delaware, which I think could be helpful if, I mean, maybe council members or others could all, you know, we could work with Holly Porter, I'm sure, you know, she's a friend, we could probably work with the Delmar Chicken Association or others to take a tour of this space. But I want to make sure when we address this that we're addressing the concerns that were brought up today, but also that we're forward-looking in where, you know, the future of agriculture is not using this, you know, these kind of older tanks, it's much more anaerobic digestion, so you can recover those nutrients which are highly needed. So I guess I'll then start with a question, I guess, if either one of you don't mind responding to what was brought up during public comment, is how is this addressing the odor, the risk to the public health, and then traffic safety?
Well, in regards to your question, how it relates to traffic safety, these are one of the things that was not, it was discussed, but when we look at as far as the overall purview, that was not what the actual commission, you know, looked at in its entirety. I think that...
Speaking to the microphone. Thank you.
Sorry. They can hear me now. So I, in regards to that question specifically, Mr. Hastings, that's something that, you know, that it was examined, but again, what we were looking at or what the actual commission was tasked to do did not go to that length.
What about odor? And then they also brought up...
I think the way that they were trying to respond to it is in regards to when you look at the setbacks, and if that's something that, you know, you may not feel, or that the council may not feel is enough, but that's what they looked at as it relates to the poultry standards.
I believe it's the same setbacks as the CAFOs.
I thought, I don't see it in here now, but I remember reading, I think I'd heard of say 200 feet, but I thought it was 400 feet, maybe that was for...
400 feet from a residential.
400 feet, right, from a residential. And I think the last meeting that we had, maybe it was a couple of meetings, when you had suggested that it needed to include everything in regards to schools and places of worship and things of that nature. So that's what the commission actually looked at as well.
Okay. I think the risk to the public health, I think, is the only, other thing that I heard them say, which was like a tank breaking or other kind of things, I guess. I think originally in this conversation, we were saying that we don't, you know, we don't regulate what happens in the tank, all we can do is regulate the size. Now it looks like we're getting into the organic fertilizer, be more specific about that, which I think is helpful. I guess the other parts of that, I guess, I mean, I have, there's no way that any of us are going to know anything about safety when it comes to if this is the right depth. You know, I'm sure the folks in the Department of Public Works with, you know, with our landfill, they might have a much better idea, but nonetheless, you know, there's a current DAF tank that's millions of gallons. I'm assuming that, hopefully, that there's no other kinds of issues with, if that were to breach of some sort. But also, you know, we got, I mean, the pictures of the flies and mosquitoes on people's homes from, you know, from half a mile away or more, I guess to that part, I don't, maybe the planning commission didn't get into that part, but I know that that's an issue that was brought up.
I would comment...
I'm sorry, response, sorry.
Just the only comment I was going to make is, all of these tanks are required by special exceptions, so there would be public notice, it would be a public hearing, and the Board of Appeals can put conditions on...
Additional ones.
Like berms.
That's their...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Before I forget, Mr. Hastings, if you're willing to spearhead that tour, I'd be glad to take it. And I was saying, we've heard these same concerns over and over again about the odor and lately the traffic. And my question is, I think we can legislate the odor, but can we legislate the traffic concerning the DAF tanks?
Traffic, I think, is, that's roads, it's enforcement. I think you're looping into the sheriff's department territory then.
Well, we have the ability, we can regulate...
But there would have to be some kind of regulation.
Yeah, we can regulate what...
Vehicles.
Yeah, we, like, what kind of vehicles travel on those roads.
On the roads, right.
What those vehicles carry.
Right. No, I don't think you can do that.
As long as you're not contradicting state law.
Right. But there's ways to do it. But, anything else, Larry?
No, no.
I didn't want to interrupt. The, yeah, a couple of questions I have. One, when we discussed this in our work session some months ago, and I know we had some differing opinions, but if my memory is serving right, the consensus was that, number one, you know, we wanted them to, you know, address this as being in the industrial zoned areas, not in the ag district. And it seemed like they just threw that out right, right, almost from the beginning.
The planning commission looked at that...
Right, I read their comments.
Intently, yes, they did, and concluded that it was better suited to be in the agricultural residential.
Because...
It is difficult, given the profile of available industrial areas in Wacomco County, you actually would be placing these tanks closer to much greater population density.
Well, I would debate that. I mean, that's why they're industrial zone districts. Because that's the, you know, the purpose of that is they're trying to, you know, avoid population density, you know, that's why industrial zones are where they are. And we certainly, our county is, you know, think about all the subdivisions that we have that are in the agricultural district. You know, we have vast numbers of subdivisions, you know, that are created, and, you know, and we have vast numbers of homes in our agricultural districts.
Right.
You can now be 200 feet, you could have a DAF tank, you know, or 400 feet away. So, you know, I've always, I've always said, it's industrial waste, needs to be industrial zones. It's not an agricultural product. This is not produced on the farm. I found it interesting that in the commission, you know, it wasn't just the residential, I think there was language in there as well about the fact that it was because it would be close to residential, it was too odorous and, like, too impactful, you know, to be in the industrial zone. But that, so it's okay to be in the agricultural zone? I mean, that just kind of perplexes me a little bit.
There was a PowerPoint that was put together by planning staff that was, probably would be helpful to take a look at it.
That's an exercise that I think that would be possibly helpful if that was something you guys wanted to actually continue the actual discussion on. But there was a lot of data that was actually provided, and there was the presentation that helped or that would assist the actual commission to make some of the decisions that they made, or the recommendations that they made.
I guess this one last thing has already come up a couple of times, but the distances, yeah, I find that, I think that's significantly inadequate, you know.
That's why we're here. We're presenting the planning commission proposal.
Yeah, I had the same concerns also, Bill, in reference to this industrial designation, but I was surprised to see that, yes, the industrial area, in Wacomco County, our industrial areas are very high density, and in one instance, you do have a residential subdivision very close to the industrial, one of our industrial parks. So they probably weren't planned out as well as they should have been, at least to, you know, to serve this purpose. The other thing I found out, too, in talking to some residents, is that it is an agricultural business, it impacts the agricultural community, and not all farmers that might want to engage in having a DAF tank could do that, if it were an industrial area, because then they would have to go at the expense of actually buying the property in the industrial area, establishing everything there, as opposed to maybe being able to put one on their own property. So that was another reason that maybe industrial, it would add unnecessary additional costs. And I'm as empathetic with all, you know, the residents in the areas as well. I don't think putting it in industrial area is going to serve everyone's best purpose. I do have concerns over the traffic, though. I really do. The balancing act there is, what do we do in limiting the trucks in the rural area? Because then you're also going to have to take into consider, what are we doing to the poultry industry with all the trucks that are going in day in and day out, removing and bringing in the chicks to all the farms? So we, you know, the unintended consequences, I think we have to tread very carefully as to how we would restrict traffic in the agricultural area as well.
Joe?
They took all this planning commission, you know, we had basically same kind of discussions as what you just said, John, about all that. One of the, one of the things I heard when all this started, what, two years ago now, something, was that the people that were affected by this had no say in what happened. That was the number-one thing I heard. I mean, I had people come into the store telling, saying to me, we had no, we had no say in this, you know? So the way this has grown up, they do.
Yes.
They do know.
They get notice, and there's a hearing.
Yes.
And, you know, of course, that can work both ways, you know? I do want to comment on Josh's comment about flies. My closest chicken house to where we live is probably a couple thousand foot, and my wife fusses at me all the time about keeping the door closed because of the flies, and we don't have a DAF tank anywhere near. It's, you know, we live in the country, do you know? There's bugs, you know, they're everywhere, you know, flies, wasps, mosquitoes. They might be more intent where that tank is, intense where that tank is, you know, I don't know. But as far as the traffic goes, we've got to make sure we got good roads. I've been preaching the roads sermon for 15 years now, you know? We can't get these country roads fixed, you know? It just never happens, you know? You get one fixed, there's two more that's bad, you know? There should be an aggressive roads program that brings our county roads up to, yeah, I know, I see Ernie going, money, 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 that's right, and money's going for other things.
Roads hauls monies.
Yeah, it's going for other things, other things rather than roads, unfortunately. Do you want me to talk about what it's going for?
Nothing.
Okay, we'll bring up the salaries. But anyway, you know, the roads part of it, you know, that's county's responsibility, and to be able to say you can take a tractor-trailer loaded with shingles down a road, but you can't take a tractor-trailer that's a tanker down the road, that means that people can't get fuel, oil, or propane, you know? So if you go restricting roads, I know one of our local municipalities here not long ago restricted their streets, you know, in the town, and had some farmers upset because it was such a small town, they actually had some fields on the streets in the town, you know? And now you've got a farmer that can't drive his farm truck down, you know? So you've got to be real careful with that. So, anyway, thank you.
Josh?
I was just going to add into that, I do think it could be, first of all, I'd say, for this process as a whole, I think it's nice that we just go slow and make sure we get it right. I would, you know, I do offer it up, I will, I can reach out to Ms. Porter and Delmar Chicken Association and see if we can get a tour, a couple of friends with Purdue, you know? I think that could be, that could be a potential option to solve some of the issues that folks have brought up, you know, with...
Get a tour, use a tour.
Yeah, when, there's a, the facility in Seaford, Delaware is an anaerobic digestion, and I think that is probably, you can basically put DAF into a closed system, and so you're not, so you're not going to smell it, you're not going to see it, there's no flies, there's no, and if you can do that, you can actually do that in an industrial area, and it's not an issue. So that could be a potential option. But I'm just reflecting what folks have said here in today's hearing, it sounds like there's still issues. So as much as possible, I'd love for us to be slow about it and deliberate. That's all, Ms. President.
Thank you. Question I had, you had mentioned that this was somewhat fashioned, close to what the poultry industry had. There was also requiring berms and rows of ferns or trees as well with the poultry issue for the houses. Was that taken into consideration? Was it sort of taken out?
That wasn't a part of the consideration. I'm going to look to my right a minute to Mr. Hall, because he was very much involved in this as well. And of course, we always want to make sure our memory, sometimes we're working on something, he's going to get something for us. But to speak to your question, Mr. Cannon, that was not.
Okay, right, because it may be something that we might want to consider, I think, to add additional protections, rows of trees and type of berms that might be put in place.
Protecting the smell?
Very similar to what we did for the poultry industry.
For the smell?
For smell, for whatever else may...
That's not going to help smell. I live two miles from the dump, and I smell that every day, and they got all kinds of barriers up there. That stuff's not going to stop the smell.
Well, it could stop, it could stop the wind from blowing, maybe. It just depends, maybe.
Nah, that's not going to help.
Yes, Keith?
Good evening, Keith Hall, Deputy Director of Planning and Zoning. Thank you for having me. I'm going to be a little repetitive, probably, from where they started. The commission looked at five decision points. So the first thing they took into consideration, and again, reviewing what the council had provided, what is the use? As the legislation came down to them, the use was about a structure. Zoning doesn't deal with structures. The use was zoning. The use was storage, I'm sorry. Anyway, so they got the use of storage. What are you storing? DAF is a process. DAF is not actually a soil amendment, it's not a liquid, it's none of that. So they had to come up with a definition, and that's in your package. It's a liquid organic fertilizer or soil amendment that is approved by the state of Maryland and made from poultry processing residuals and what else? Something else. So what's the zoning district? Councilman McKee, you said something about I-1, I-2 zoning. Councilman McKee, you said something about I-1, I-2 zoning.
If we could. Look at this. I can't, I can't. It's a trick. I got camera.
Mr. President, as they're setting up, I just want to remind council that we do have a moratorium on this right now, and that will expire in July.
Thank you. Sorry.
Okay. Can everybody see that? So this is the county zoning map. As proposed, what came down from the county council was that it was going to be an I-1 and I-2 zoning districts. That's light and heavy industrial. Heavy industrial is in the purple, light industrial is in the light blue. You see roughly there's six areas. You've got your area up here, which is by Neil and Mill Road, which is behind a major activity generator, commercial shopping centers, very intensely developed area. In addition, it's over the paleo, or close to the paleo channel. And these are designated, the areas around the purple are designated county and city growth areas. This is where cities and towns are looking to annex. This is where the county is encouraging growth and development to go. So that area really does not work very well. Again, intensely developed. When you look at Brick Hill and Road corridor, that's a little different, less intensely developed. One can make an argument that something that's heavy, very intense use would go in a heavy industrial zoning district out there. The Port Salisbury, I don't know if you want this intensity of use next to the Port Salisbury. I don't think that was ever the intention of the council. It's a growth area, up next to a lot of commercial and residential activity. And then when you look at this area on Zion Church Road, that's the Purdue Green facility. It might not ever change from that use, but once you come inside on the properties adjacent, just on the other side of the bypass, you see there's a lot of intensity of use versus the A-1. There are major subdivisions out in the A-1, as Councilman McKee had made example of. You've got some out here off Rock and Walking, some off Quantico Road, you've got your Harvard and Box J on 3rd and Third Run. But when you look at the majority of the A-1, you don't see a lot of roads, because there's not a lot of developments out there compared to in this area. So when the Planning and Zoning Commission looked at this, they looked at the use, which was storage of a liquid organic fertilizer or a soil amendment that stayed approved from poultry processing residuals that go through a dissolved air flotation process. What does that mean? It's specific to what you know as DAF. It's not any other soil amendment, it's not any other fertilizer, none of that. So use, you've got your definition, you've got your A-1 zoning district recommendation.
Before you get too far, though, you know, because I don't want to get too far and have to come back, here's the big difference. Those industrial zone districts exist, they're on that map, you know where they are. So if you own real estate, for example, or you're buying real estate and you're adjacent to industrial zone district, you know that. So you know what potential uses may go there. You buy your house in the ag district, you know, you can wake up tomorrow and, you know, if you're going to permit this in the ag district, then you could have a DAF, three million gallon DAF storage tank goes up 400 feet from your house.
You could.
Right. Well, that's a big, that's a big difference. That's a big, you know, you know where these, you know, this is all, you already know where the, your industrial zone areas are. So, you know, there's, yes, is there some development around them? Yes, but they're industrial zone areas, you know, like you point out, like, you know, where the landfill area, that, you know, that's a pretty large area, we have an I-2 district there. You know, there's actually very light, there's actually very little, you know, residential around, that's, that's why it's zoned I-2.
So the legislation that was considered by the council at that table also required a 300-foot setback, and it required that it was on a. The planning commissioner established assistance went through that analysis. There are very few eligible properties, and we're talking, I don't want to quantify qualitatively, it's really not many that are going to be available. In addition, another consideration that the commission took into account is that, let's say you do put a storage tank for a liquid organic fertilizer or soil amendment in these purple and white purple areas, traffic. So it's going to come from here out to where it's being applied. Would it not help to reduce traffic if you had it closer to where it's being applied? That was something that they thought about. Those were the considerations, the limited availability, the cost per acre, it is considered agricultural, and I know there's some dispute here. They looked at it from, the Maryland Department of Agriculture has approved this for the use on a farm. How it's produced, where it's produced, zoning works on where it's at, the piece of property that's at. And I'll give you an example. Everything in your home was probably produced in an industrial zone district, in an industrial plant. But your home's not. Your home's not placed in an industrial zone district. Because your home, the use is a residence. It's not where the stuff that came into your residence was produced from. So they had to differentiate that as well. It wasn't that it was felt that out here is better, it's the product is going out here, it's agricultural product, it's not an industrial product, it's permitted by the state, therefore the A-1 zoning district is where it landed. However, this is up for your discussion, Ms. McKee. The planning commission's recommendations were based off staff input as well as staff analysis that they asked for. Another concern was traffic. I think that was mentioned by a few council members today. Zoning, when you look at the zoning code, chapter 225, uses aren't predicated on the classification of road that they're on. That's not zoning. If you wanted to look at roads, you would look at minimum frontage sizes of your lot. For example, a sawmill, an A-1 zoning district, you've got to have a frontage of 1,500 feet. Pretty big, extensive gap there. You're not getting those lots everywhere in the county. When you look at road classifications and you say, well, it has to have frontage on this road style or that road style. Well, that's good for the property, but the product's still going to be using all these roads for circulation patterns. So it doesn't really achieve that much, or it doesn't achieve the end goal. So the third point that they looked at after zoning was, is this going to be a conditional use or is this going to be inherent? Inherent mean by right. You come in, you're in the zoning district, you meet the building permit requirements, and away she goes. They said everything's going to be by special exception, as Mr. Wilber stated. A special exception takes in a certain criteria and the consideration on a case-by-case evaluation for applications. One of those things is the traffic. It will analyze that. There are certain roads that can handle more capacity, whether it's a residential use or agricultural use, non-agricultural use, and others. That's very key, because not all roads are the same. They saw that. We looked at the analysis, we showed them the collector roads and above. And again, it did not achieve the desired result. So I think that was part of their consideration, why everything goes to the Board of Appeals. Special exception, it will take into consideration that criteria. Another thing, as the legislation came down to the commission, it was about an above-ground storage tank. Well, keeping in mind what the direction they've gone, with how the use is termed and how it's defined, now it doesn't matter if it's above ground, if it's below ground, if it's in a lagoon, if it's in a warehouse, it all requires a special exception. The special exception was something we heard for the past few years about the lack of transparency with this process. This is the way that you ensure that there's going to be transparency so that the public can come and comment on any application that would require this use in the future. Let's see, what do I forget? Setbacks, it was already stated. Poultry was the landing spot. As it came down from this council, it was a 300-foot setback. However, it was heard what council member said, and it was also expressed to the commissioners, that 300 feet, that, that might work. But poultry was probably the biggest debate about a setback I've experienced in my 15 years in Wycomico County. Very extensive work. And what I think the setbacks for poultry do that most don't, it took in consideration adjacency of uses, residential subdivisions that council member Hastings set, places of religious worship, places of assembly. All those things are taken into consideration with a variable setback, that if your property is not adjacent to any of those uses, it's a 200-foot setback, similar to poultry. If it is next to that, it's a 400-foot setback. Again, I think a very, looking at the other uses that are allowed in the A-1 zoning district, that's pretty restrictive. Councilmember Hastings, you said something about flies.
For the record, we got a, early on, just to be clear, we received multiple pictures that were sent to us of, I think it was a car, if I remember, you'll remember, and a couple of the houses that were covered in flies, there's tens of thousands of flies that they had.
If I could intercede very quickly, I would possibly want, with the council's blessing, to continue this in another work session. I say that because we have two more work sessions ahead of us and we're under time restraints.
Thank you for your time. We'll make sure we come back.
It's a lot of information. It is a lot of information. We don't want to miss it.
And I think that is something that is applaudable by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Right. You've done excellent work.
They threw all these steps, and I think one thing that we have to be cautious about as we move forward with this deliberation is making sure we parse out what is under the authority of zoning and what is not under the authority of zoning and what might reside with another regulatory body.
Understood, yes.
I'd like to ask in regards to what it is, I know specifically what you would want us to bring back, because again, it is a lot of information as what.
I think where Keith is heading is very good. I mean, obviously, he's, he's helping us be completely aware of all the processes that have been in place and what you went through, and that's very valuable to us.
Yes, okay.
So, yes, and continuation.
It's more us having to figure out where do we go.
Analysis of it all, okay.
Yeah, right.
And I think Joe, Joe hit on it from the beginning, and you reiterated the fact that there was a request for more input, and that's, that's probably one of the key goals that we've achieved so far through the appeal process. But again, thank you. What we'd probably do is in the daytime at a 10 o'clock meeting, so that you all don't have to come in at night, huh? Yeah. PP. But thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Figure out how to take that apart.